So, Mrs. Van, if you would call the role, please?
Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Slowey.
Present. Thank you, and if you would read the video statement?
Tonight's meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed captioned and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, January 27th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Great. Thank you. Approval of the agenda is the next item. Anybody want to switch things around or take a motion?
Move approval?
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number four, recognition of San Juan High School football players.
Great. Thank you. So I'm going to ask if Councilmember Daniels will come down below with me, and then I'll read some of this, and we'll hand out some fancy little things, and we'll get moving. So, you know, as a politician, sometimes you do things that, I don't want to say rub you the wrong way, but I have three daughters. They all went to Mesa. So I know I'm here to recognize San Juan High School, so I will keep those comments to myself. So, "We want to recognize the San Juan High School Football Team for achievements during last year's season. San Juan High School is part of a six-team Sierra Delta League with approximately 150 varsity football players in the league. Each year, coaches from all the league teams come together and select the players that have excelled throughout the league. Additionally, high school football players must maintain 3.5 GPA or higher to be considered for all-league academic team." So I have three groups that I want to recognize, and I'll just tell you upfront, I hurt my thumb, so I'm not going to be shaking any of your hands, but I'll give these to Brett, and he can pass them out. So if you'd come up, what we'll do is when, after I'm done giving them all, we'll take a big group picture up here. So once he gives them to you, hang up front. So the first three we're giving out are, "We want to recognize the following students for their outstanding achievement of selection to the Sierra Delta Football League All Team, or All League First Team for last year." So we have Romero Bryant. And if I pronounce any of your names wrong, I apologize upfront, because I know I will. Matt Coulter. Matt here? Not here? Okay, Matt. You don't get your little piece of paper. Charlie Surratt. Good job. All right, so that was the All League First Team. Now, yeah, go ahead, sorry. The next group is for Outstanding Achievement of Selection to the Sierra Delta Football League All League Honorable Mention Team of 2019. Christian Angulo? Angulo? Am I close? He's not here. Good, so I can say his name any way I want. Nathan Graffy? Not here either? Okay. How about Jaden Reddick? Man, that whole group. All right, so we'll save those. Maybe one of you got, take it. All right. So then the last group, and I'm hoping at least a couple of you are here for this one, because we're not doing good otherwise. So this is the Sierra Delta Football League All League Academic, of course you're here, you're the academic team for last year. So we have Ruben Lake. Good job, Ruben. Then we have Yana Linco. Good job, Yana. Elijah Vernon. And then we have Wyatt. Yeah, that guy. Yes, so. Okay, so the Honorable Mention Team showed up. Good for you. We, you know, we start at seven, but don't worry about that. So, Matt Coulter, is he here? All right, Matt. So this is for the First Team. Thank you. All right, so then for the Honorable, pardon me, Honorable Mention Team, hopefully we have Christian, Nathan, and Jaden. No? Okay. Christian and Jaden. Good job. And so Nathan isn't here, but one of you will take that with it. All right, so. All right, so Coach Andy, do you want to say anything? You're good? All right.
I just want to say that these guys and girl put a lot of work in this season, and I'm really proud of them. I got put on the spot, so I have no idea what I'm supposed to say, but let's give the guys and girl a round of applause.
Perfect. You guys have done this before, right?
Get in there, guys, like you like each other. Come on.
All right. Snap away.
Everybody look at me real quick, and then. Matthew, I'm here. I'm right here.
One more. All right. Last shot, folks. Come on. All right. So congratulations to the men and women. Thank you very much.
Well done.
No, I just cut it off. Long story. All right. Thank you for that. All right, so we have one more presentation. Mrs. Van, if you would tell us what that is?
Next presentation number five is a presentation by San Juan Unified School District regarding district strategic planning efforts.
Catherine, are you going to give us that? Oh, sorry. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Slowey, Vice Mayor Miller, council members, and thank you for the time to come and share some of the work that we've been doing in San Juan Unified School District in the development of a new six-year strategic framework, and in the development of a new three-year local control accountability plan. I'm honored to share some of the extensive listening and learning that we have been engaged in with our community, and share the product of the first round, which is the strategic framework that I brought to share with you today. So, a framework. We've made the decision to move from a strategic plan that detailed everything that will happen over the course of six years to something a little bit more flexible, a strategic framework. And this is intended to work in conjunction with the state-required local control accountability plan, where we really take the concepts, the mission statement, the shared values, our equity lens, and our areas of focus, and we put them into action, we align them to budget, we align them to academic goals, and we put them into annual sort of reflective cycles. And I'll talk a little bit more about how these two documents, or how these two plans work together. We had a five-part process in this initial phase, and it began with strategic planning. We brought together a group of community and staff members, not to draft a plan in isolation. I'm sure many of you have been involved in those processes, where you sort of cloister in hotel ballrooms and with lots of strong coffee, hack out a plan, and argue over verbs and present it as done. I've certainly been a part of that before, but we decided to do something different, which was to convene to figure out what are the questions we need to ask our community. And then we took them out into the community in several ways. The first way was with the regional forums, including one held here in Citrus Heights. We also did some targeted listening and learning when looking at our academic data, looking at the student groups, that we need to do a better job serving, and made sure that we wanted to do some targeted listening with those students and parents and the staff that served them. We brought that information back to Day Three, and we use that data and that input as the basis for the development of our strategic framework. And then we convened a staff to say, well, what is the community telling us that our needs are as a school district? How does that reconcile with what the state of California thinks that we need to measure and be mindful of, and develop focus areas? And so I'm going to kind of provide a little bit more detail about the process, and the outcome, and the connection, and then pause for any questions. So during Day One, we examined our demographic data to consider who we are as a district, and how are we changing? And also to ensure, you know, when we look at the different ways that we conduct our stakeholder engagement, who's sort of lost in this data? Whose voices are we missing? And how can we ensure that they're not lost in our process, in terms of the development of the strategic framework, also in the development of our local control accountability plan? This led into a second day, where we took a real hard look at our performance data, and we looked at, you know, what did the data show? But when we look at data, oftentimes, this is state-reported data. It's a year old, right? A lot of the, it is complemented with our local data, but we thought a lot about, you know, who's really experiencing these data points? So let's not look at chronic absenteeism and isolation without talking to the people that are experiencing that, whether that's a principal who's struggling to get their students to school, whether that's a student who's struggling to get to school. So we use that as a jumping-off point to figure out, what did the data say? What is the limitations of the data? And who do we need to connect with further? We took these questions to the regional forums. We had three regional forums across our sort of diverse geographic region, and we had 92% of our school site teams attend these regional forums, and those are principals attending with teachers, attending with parents, attending with students. We also had a robust showing of community members as well. And we put the questions to them in terms of, you know, what are the skills that our students need to be successful in the economy that we live in? And then also, what are the qualities and characteristics that we want to see in them when they come back to visit us as adults? And what do the data say about who we're serving and who we need to serve better? And finally, we, and you'll see this in an invitation I'll extend for another April forum, how does that connect with what we're seeing at our school sites? And so we were able to gather input towards the development of the plan there. In addition, we went out and we did, we held listening circles across our district to connect with the students that we don't do a particularly good job of listening to, partly because the, you know, the data that we gathered in terms of demographic and how we report to the state, they just don't kind of capture groups. But also, we wanted to make sure that we're listening to student groups that showed that, you know, we had some real sort of performance concerns. Those are the student groups. And we did this in listening circles. We had one instance where we're figuring out, all right, how do we find, how do we talk to a good chunk of our Native American students that are, you know, that are sort of a small percentage of our population, less than 1%? And so we heard out, they're going to be on a bus for a college field trip, so we got on the bus. And so, any way that we could, we went out and we gathered information from our community. We brought this back as the basis for the development of the document that you see in front of you. And it, again, was not about the opinions of the people coming into the room, the 35 people. It was those people who had a lot of homework in parsing all of the data that my team collected. And then they use that data for the basis of the decisions around, what are the values that our community has told us they value? And how does that articulate into a mission statement? So, this is a much shorter mission statement than we have had in the past. That's intentional. One of the things we considered is, how can we take our extensive strategic plan of the past and get it down to a document that can be easily known and owned? We grabbed some design principles from those who produce websites, thinking about, how long do you really have before somebody's attention is drawn away? And so this is what we came up with for a mission statement. These are the shared values that emerged from the data set. Inclusivity, real-world knowledge. There was, we heard loud and clear from parents and from students that the work that we're doing in terms of preparing them for college and career, or even thinking about how that backwards maps to middle school, to elementary school, there was a crystal-clear signal from all involved that the work we're doing in classrooms needs to connect with real-world outcomes, right? And to build that explicit connection. And that we really need to mind, we need to build social-emotional learning in our students, and we also need to teach them to persevere when things are tough. So those are the shared values that emerged. We have always had an equity lens, not always, but we have had an equity lens in San Juan Unified School District, and so we brought that fully into the document, and you can sort of read that there. And then I mentioned that we also had to consider the state of California priorities. And so we took the mission statement, the shared values, we took the equity statement, and then we considered the state priorities. So these are the priorities that the state gives to us. They say, if we're going to use our state funds, these are the things that you need to be measuring, and you need to be prioritizing in your academic programs. And in that, we created focus areas, which are on the reverse side of the strategic framework. Connected school communities, really about how can we build deeper connections between the schools and the communities that exist within, healthy environments for social-emotional growth, engaging academic programs, and then clear pathways to bright futures. And so the interesting thing about that, we started to build teams across departments within our school district, from the practitioner level to the district office, in order to start to think about, what does this mean in terms of how we need to improve as a system? Pathways to bright futures, that is now not just a secondary or a high school concern. This is now something that we think of as a pre-K, post-12 continuum. Right? I've got a, you know, not to disappoint, I have an animated PowerPoint graphic to kind of show you how this all works together. So, the idea is that, you know, we went to the community, and they told us what our values and our mission is. We brought in our sort of equity lens, so that we're always mindful of who's doing well in our system and who needs additional support. We built a theory of improvement, basically getting on the same page about how it is we think we get better as a system, at sites, in classrooms. And then we articulated our focus areas. Now, I mentioned that this strategic framework is incomplete without the local control accountability plan, and so that dotted line is really this point in time. It's, as we sort of wrap up the framework, we're now re-engaging the community, we're going back out, and we're gathering information to develop our local control accountability plan, which will consist of five goals that map directly to our theory of improvement and our focus areas. And then we are going to align our metrics and align our budgets with the idea that if we're intentional about how we're measuring growth, how we're resourcing different programs and activities, then we're meeting our LCAP goals. And if we're meeting our LCAP goals, then we are meeting our shared or our focus area goals. And if we're doing all that, then we're living into the values and we're accomplishing the mission. So this is the process that we have ahead of us, another round of stakeholder engagement, listening and learning to our employee groups, our staff, our parents, our community, our students. And as part of that, I wanted to extend an invitation, is we will have a spring regional forum to gather input, feedback on the draft local control accountability plan. That'll be right up the way, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. on April 23rd. We'll make sure that you have all the information to put it out into communication, to sort of, to invite people to attend. One thing worth mentioning, at that, we'll be repeating the pattern, where we come together as a school, as school sites, and as a district, to think about what we're doing as a larger system, but also thinking about how those priorities are connected to what schools are doing. So you're going to hear about the district and the local control accountability plan, which we submit to the state, but you're also going to hear about how schools are taking those goals and putting them into action at their school sites. And with that, I'll pause for any questions.
Thank you for that, and I'm glad to see that you guys aren't just assuming everything's status quo and you're looking to improve, which is a wonderful thing. Any questions from any of us up here? Jeanie?
Hi. Thank you for coming. Sorry, I'm turning it on. There we go. Thank you for coming this evening. When you go back a couple slides to where they have the five values, there you go. What I am looking for and not finding is a value of seeking academic excellence. Where's the academics in all of this?
So, in addition to the real-world knowledge, which was a very prominent shared value, if you look specifically at the focus areas, those are, there's a statement around what we see as the connection and what research shows is the connection between social-emotional and academic excellence. It's sort of stated in the preamble. And then when you look at the idea with the focus areas, and so if you think about those four boxes, the connected school communities, the healthy environments for social-emotional growth, the engaging academic programs, and the clear pathways to bright futures, there's a recognition that those are all interconnected. And so with connected school communities, we got to get kids to school. And when we get them to school, we got to make sure that they are in a place where they are able to learn. And once we get them there, then we can engage them in those academic programs. And if we're intentional about doing all of that, then we can connect them with the bright futures. So it's really kind of taking a vision that all of those pieces are interconnected.
I understand what you're saying. I'm just finding it kind of lacking that academic excellence isn't named along with those other four pieces as a goal, because that's what we want in Citrus Heights. We want to have academic excellence, and I'm sure any other community would do. And even though they all work together, from what you're telling me to point to that, it just seems to me that it would be a wonderful statement to have academic excellence as a stated operational or part of the strategic framework. That's just my thoughts on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming here to give it to us, and I'm glad you were able to do it where, you know, people could see it not only on TV but replay. So, good to see the partnership, not only between the city and the school district, but what you're doing to hopefully improve it. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
And if you would, yeah, make sure that you give the information to the clerk about the 23rd of April, so that we can get it on our calendars.
Yes, sir.
Not that you necessarily want to hear from us, but we'll have it on our calendars anyway.
Right.
Thank you. All right. I think that does it for presentations. Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates. Mrs. Middleton, what's up from your end?
I've spent the last couple days at the League of Cities, learning more about how to be a better council member, and about just legislation and things about how to, I did my Brown Act training too. So just learning how to. So, just learning how to be a better steward of our community and making sure that we're also being really engaged and focusing on what our priorities are for the city. And that's really it. No boards or commissions have met this year yet.
Brown Act, that must have been some exciting meetings. Mr. Daniels?
Thank you. Airboard met today, very nice meeting, on the positive side. Talked a little bit about the history of the board. Just so you know, lots of stuff is going on to keep your air clean. Over the past five years, we're talking about 8,100 projects, 31 of them having funding of $250,000 or more, and in the process, we've reduced about 11 tons of emissions per day out of the air. So, a lot of good things going on with the Airboard, a lot of money gets spent, but it's being productive. On the other side, talked a bit, a little bit about AB 617. That's an effort that started during the last administration that takes the regional effort and dials it down more into the community level. And a lot of good projects and things like that, that we can sink into communities in the Sacramento region. Unfortunately, this governor's budget that came out just recently cut the funding in half for that program. And so, that's a real problem to be able to do those things that the board wants to do going forward, but we just might have to face a little bit of reality. It's kind of a little disheartening with the state telling us how much money they have all the time, and all we keep doing is seeing things like this. They put mandates on, which we always talk about, and then, for some reason, the money's somewhere else. And so, hopefully, that works its way out, and we continue with what we want to do there. Piggybacking on our last meeting, and had a nice, very nice meeting yesterday with the city manager, police chief, city attorney, city manager's assistant regarding homeless issues, and hopefully, we'll have something productive come out of that. On Tuesday, I'm attending a conference in Sacramento specifically towards the issue of the decision by the U.S. Supreme Court not to hear the Boise case and what that means going forward with policies and enforcements. Subsequent to that, perhaps I'll be back and ask for a little bit more direct directions from the council going forward. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Bruins?
Thank you. Yesterday, the Regional Sand Board met, and our former council member and now supervisor Sue Frost was elected by the board to be the chairman this year, so we wish her well in that. We had a couple of reports. One was an update on our Echo Water project, as I've reported on before. And the other one was on our nutrient program, which is where we recycle and convert liquid waste into fertilizer. So, those are ongoing programs and projects. Our most interesting piece actually was a consent calendar piece, which was pulled. It had to do with putting a cell tower on the American River Parkway. And AT&amp;T was there, and basically, the recommendation, we, the district, San Antonio District has a small piece of property that's adjacent, I think, to the sheriff's training facility. And they want to put a cell tower there. And so, it hadn't been vetted yet through the process. We had a lot of discussion about the pros and cons of putting a cell tower on the American River Parkway. And in the end, we kind of kicked the can down the road and said, you need to go through the county process first and then come back to us once you've vetted all of that, rather than trying to get an advanced approval to take with you. So, that was kind of fun. Had a PAL, Police Activities League Board meeting this last week, and we have a fundraiser coming up on March 13th. It's a cornhole contest. And it proves, I think you can do this without a lot of skill, and maybe I'm wrong, you know, but if you can stick a little beanbag in a hole, you can have some fun. So, we're going to be opening that, that's open up to the public, and I think if you go onto the PAL website, you'll see some advertising on that. And if you would like to be a sponsor, you actually can go home with a signed cornhole game. You get to take a board home with you. So, that's coming up. And then finally, we've been, in our strategic planning meeting, we made one of our goals to actually show our appreciation to our various business communities. And so, this past week, we had a business appreciation event for ABBA, which is the Aubrey Boulevard Business Association, at the new restaurant and tea house called Tea It. And it was lovely. We had a lot of business people out there, a lot of our staff, and presented some of our plans for the Boulevard. And if you haven't been to Tea It yet, it's a privately-owned, family operation, and it's where the old Jim Boy's Tacos used to be, right across the street from where the Studio Movie Real is going in, and they have a beautiful facility there, and they have really great food and wonderful teas. So, it's a plug for one of our local business people. And that kind of rounds out my activities these last two weeks.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Bruins. Vice Mayor Miller?
Thank you. A week ago, attended the RT meeting, nothing really notable. We made appointments to regional and mega-region boards, and I was ratified as vice chair for RT that night. Last Thursday, attended the STA Expenditure Subcommittee, and not much to report out of that, although we're fighting for Citrus Heights to get as much sales tax as possible for our roads. Next Monday's Regional Transit Meeting has been canceled due to lack of business items, so we'll meet in February. A couple of things to note, the state, if you haven't heard, is planning on going ahead with one tunnel under the Delta, and there is, the environmental review has been initiated. You can go to the, find it on the state website underwater.california.gov, the EIR. Comments are due by March 20th, and there's a scoping meeting in Sacramento at the Cal EPA Building on February 3rd, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., if you're interested in that. Also kicking off in February, on February 7th, Friday, is the Fill the Boot for Burns Boot Drive at Sunrise Mall, so you'll again see the firefighters in the intersection of Greenback and Sunrise for their annual fundraiser. And I think that's all I have to note.
Great. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
So, I'll try to keep mine brief. SACOG, Sacramento Area Council of Governments, met, mostly housekeeping, elected a new chair and vice chair. Today, I was downtown with the assistant to the city manager, Catherine Cooley. We both sit on League of California Cities Committees. We had a very good, I thought, very good presentation by the head of CalPERS on that whole situation. The good news is, you know, they're 74% funded. The bad news is they're only 74% funded. So, you know, they really need to be in the 90% to 92% funding range to have all the municipalities be good, you know, feel good, and not worry about defaults, worry about ongoing increased costs that they don't have any control over. So, she did a very good job of explaining, you know, I mean, and truthfully, in the last four years, it's come up from 64%, so it's doing better, but we're not out of the woods yet. I happen to sit on the Revenue and Tax Subcommittee, and we talked about the, you know, overall, again, what the state and what the league is trying to accomplish with overhauling sales tax, based on the Supreme Court ruling on Wayfair, online distributor. At the end of the day, we're actually, it would cost the city, not a lot, but a little bit of money, we actually take in more sales tax from what we call county pools than we would under the proposed system. It's not a big number, but I mean, there's some, perfect example, Ontario, Ontario stands to lose about $2 million a year, that's a pretty good chunk of money, if the state pushes through what they've proposed in terms of changes to the sales tax. So, we're proposing something that we think, from the league, is better for all the cities. Again, can't stop the fact that some of the cities are going to end up with losing money, but we can, one, make it more of a phased-in approach, and, two, you know, if you, I'll just give you an example, if you have an Amazon distribution center in your city, those trucks are going to be coming in and out every day, so you're going to have wear and tear on your infrastructure. Today, you get the sales tax from this, all the sales generated out of that building, even though, you know, let's say, 100 of them a week come into Citrus Heights. The proposal is to change, not the sales tax going from not the distribution center, but what they call CITIS, where the merchandise is delivered. But again, if you happen to have that site, you're still going to get that wear and tear on your infrastructure. And that, you know, that's going to go all, but merchandise from there is going all over the state. So, we're working together, I know the city managers are, you know, talking about this, et cetera, but they're trying to come up with a plan where it's a little more palpable than what the state is proposing, because they're proposing it goes into effect on this date, and it's just a clearing of the board, and, you know, there will be lots of municipalities who end up losing out. So, again, truthfully, from Citrus Heights' end, we're not a winner in this, but we're not a major loser. But, you know, we have to do what's right for the region and the state, so we're working on that. CalPERS, you covered fire, the burn thing. All right. That's it from my end. Good. Next item, Ms. Van.
Next item is public comment, and members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, fill out a speaker sheet and give it to myself. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments. Any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times.
Great. Thank you. So, I have three speaker sheets. One doesn't have a connection to the agenda. Mr. Warren, I'm going to call you first. Yours is on item number 11, but that's on the consent calendar, and we're going to take that as a whole. So, if you'd like to come up and speak, please. And Mr. Warren will be followed by Cynthia Mumford.
I'd like to request that you remove item 11 from the consent calendar. There's no doubt that quality education is important, and charter schools seem to offer such an alternative, but they actually are a detriment to the majority of students in our school districts. Let's assume this charter school has two classrooms for each grade. That's eight classrooms of 25 students, times two, is 400 students who are no longer going to be in the school district, they're going to be in the charter school. There are four major detriments that are created, the least of which is the loss of money to be divided equally among all of the elementary school students and the rest of the schools, because the school districts count on a certain amount of funding, a minimum level of funding, to support the larger number of students. You take the money for the 400 students out, and it's a terrific loss. Third in priority, the students who are in the charter school are no longer contributing to the benefit of the children who are of lesser education in the rest of the student population. Brighter students may go to the charter school, but they're not there to lift up children who are, have language difficulties, social difficulties, who these brighter students can help. Number second in priority, the deterioration of the physical plant of our public schools. You take 800 students out of the general schools. I recall Mr. Miller decrying the fact there's the possibility that San Juan High School may close because there's not enough students to keep it open. If we take 800 students out of the elementary schools in our school district, what are you going to tell the parents, such as the parents at Sylvan Elementary, who don't have an elementary school anymore? You're going to have, the school district's going to have to close a neighborhood elementary school to backfill for the loss of those 800 students going to the charter school. Is it fair to the local individuals in the community to have the local school close so that the charter school can operate? But of the highest priority is the fact of the loss of the parents who are interested in education, who will no longer have an interest in improving the entire school district. They're only going to care about their child in the charter school. We need to lift up and improve all of the schools in the school district. If you have the best and the brightest and the most motivated parents addressing only the charter school, the school district is going to lose the people who are going to be there to advocate for improvement, to advocate for more funding for the school district. Now, when those, the parents of the students who are left behind come to you and say, why is my elementary school closing? You will be partially responsible by endorsing this charter school proposition. We need to take care of all of the students in the local school district, not the few that are going to attend the charter school. The charter school originally started out for central city schools to improve situations, but we need to improve all of the schools in our school district. Our schools are failing, lack of funding, deteriorating infrastructure, the money that will be taken away from the state funding to go to the charter school that could be divided among all the school, students in our school district, and most importantly, the loss of the parents to support the unified school district. Therefore, I ask that you take this off the consent calendar and reject the request, and leave it to our local school district to provide quality education for all the students in our school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Mumford. Welcome.
Hi.
Hello.
Thank you very much for having us. I'm the executive director at Omni Youth Program, Cynthia Mumford, as you said. But I'm here tonight to represent the Sacramento County Coalition for Youth, and we have been sent to say thank you to you for not legalizing recreational marijuana dispensaries here in Citrus Heights. So, what, our coalition was founded in 2015, and the whole purpose was to prevent youth from engaging in alcohol and marijuana misuse, binge drinking, overuse addiction, et cetera. So, that is our goal, and you are, having made that decision, contributes greatly to that outcome of protecting youth and providing them with a safe environment. We've learned a lot of things once we decided to take on this issue head-on, especially after it became legalized a few years ago, and I just wanted to share a few quick little things that surprised me after being in the field for decades that I didn't know, that were quite eye-opening. They'll be very short. One, we've learned that the marijuana, THC in marijuana affects the youth, the teen brain, very differently than an adult's brain, and it causes a lot more damage and creates addiction much quicker, and we've been very surprised by the brain scans that have been coming out because of this. Another issue is that, I don't know. The strength of the THC in marijuana has risen so dramatically. It was 1% to 3% in the 70s, you know, the 60s and 70s, or the Woodstock era. By the late 90s, it was 8% THC, and then in the early 2000s, it was about maybe 15%. Going as high as 20% was unbelievable. Nowadays, with concentrates, oils, dabs, et cetera, it can be as high as 99% THC. And just new research that, I got informed by my coworker just two days ago, they have found another way to make it even stronger than that through manipulation of it. So, it's a really strong drug, and it's not the same drug everybody thinks of who may have used it in the past or just hasn't kept up with the research like we have. And the third point is that when there are legal dispensaries intended for adults in a neighborhood, youth use of these substances rise and rise and rise, even though they're not intended for them. It creates an environment and an unspoken message, this can't be that bad, it's legal. Even though I'm not supposed to use it yet, it's still safe enough for it to be legal for adults. And so, the coalition, which is made up of school districts, nonprofits, parents, community members, faith organizations, a lot of people were very active, were very engaged and involved, we've been noticing. And one of the big things we noticed is what you have done here, or rather, not done in Citrus Heights, and they sent us to say thank you very much for that.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah. Mike?
Just, I'm just adding, I'm here not
Just, I'm just adding, I'm here not only, I'm the associate director of Omni Youth Programs and a member of the coalition as well, but I'm here as a parent that we live in the community here. And again, the Sacramento County Coalition for Youth is solely focused on youth use of marijuana and alcohol. We're not, you know, debating recreational use by adults at all. But we for sure are very thankful that along with 80 other cities in California, Citrus Heights has decided to not allow dispensaries in the area. Because that does in fact, like my colleague said, really contribute to the normalization. And studies show over and over again that youth use definitely goes up. I would also like to, on behalf of the coalition, offer our services to the council, the city at large. If you need us for a resource, for any, any of the most updated information, because like Cynthia said, the new marijuana is very new. It's a completely different drug. And how it affects youth especially is totally new. And as we know, vaping is becoming quite an issue in a lot of our schools. So we're available to go anywhere in the county, but especially Citrus Heights, to do presentations at schools, at meetings, at parent, whatever you want.
For free.
Yeah, for free. We come out and do that. So we do have some handouts with some stats on it. And also it has the coalition website on it. And please feel free to use the coalition as a resource. But again, thank you for not allowing dispensaries in your city. And we're also having a marijuana prevention summit, our second one. We, our first one was last year. It's at the Doubletree Hotel on March 23rd. It's free and it's open to the public, to whoever wants to go.
Great. And if you want to give your information to Amy over there, she'll make sure we get it. All right? Thank you folks for coming. My last speaker is actually for item number 16, so I'll call that one up when we get to that item. Ms. Van, next item, please.
Next item is consent calendar items six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13.
Excuse me, I need to announce that I will not participate in item nine because I have a built-in conflict of interest due to the close proximity of my property to the trail.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Is this a motion for item number nine?
No. Motion for all items with the understanding that if Jeannie gives an eye, she's saying she's not voting on number nine, right? So I don't have to pull that one separate.
Shouldn't that be done separately?
Could.
You could do it either way, but we could do it separately if...
Let's do it my way.
We'll do it your way.
That Jeannie's eye will not count for number nine. That's the simplest way.
So I'll second, I'll second the mayor's motion.
Okay. So this is for four of us to say on all of them, and Jeannie's only voting on four, skipping number nine. So we have a motion. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Jeannie's eye doesn't count for nine. Any opposed, abstained? Motion carries 5-0 on most of them, 4-0 on one of them. All right. Next item.
Next item is public hearing, item number 14. The subject is municipal code and zoning code update regarding marijuana delivery. And recommended motions are to determine the proposed amendments are exempt from California Environmental Quality Act and to introduce for first reading an ordinance to amend chapter 47 and chapter 106 of the municipal code.
Welcome. More marijuana talk. Great.
Right. And I'm not changing anything that they just think this for either, so that's good.
Don't be doing that.
Good evening, Council Allison with the Planning Division here with the request to amend our municipal code and our zoning code in regard to marijuana, specifically marijuana delivery. Last year, the Bureau of Cannabis Control, the state agency that oversees marijuana regulations, came out and said that jurisdictions, you must allow delivery of marijuana into your jurisdiction, whether you allow marijuana businesses or not. So for quite some time, since marijuana has been legalized, the medicinal and the recreational, we have not allowed that to occur. And so our ordinances, both in our municipal code and our zoning code, clearly state that. So now with this new ruling, we need to amend those to say marijuana businesses, you continue to not be allowed, but our community can receive deliveries from businesses outside of our jurisdiction. So what's presented to you is to amend that to make it consistent with state law. And we're not changing anything else in regard to marijuana that you've presently, previously adopted. Since there are two sections that are being amended, the zoning code, that portion did go to this planning commission in December. They reviewed it and accepted the changes and afforded their recommendation. So you'll be acting on their recommendation as well as the chapter 47 section that's under your purview that's related to marijuana businesses. So the resolution that presented would do both those actions. And I'm happy to answer any questions that I can on the topic.
So, I mean, fact of the matter is, one, we need to because we have to be compliant with state law. And the other fact of the matter is, you know, our, our police department does a great job, but this is very difficult to track unless you either pull it over in the city and they've got marijuana in there, or you're sitting at the address when they come. So I get that we have to be in state law. I don't like it, but, you know, it is what it is. So do we have any questions from us to staff? Vice Mayor Miller?
Does, does state get any revenue from allowing deliveries through a tax?
There is taxes collected on it. We do not receive any of those taxes that's collected from the delivery.
And how do they track who's actually making these deliveries, going towards what Jeff was saying about police department? And I assume that they still have to get a business license in our city, but how do we track that? Is there a database from the state that lets us know?
We, that's the difficult part. I mean, technically, they are required to get a business license as with other delivery companies, but tracking, you know, they could pop in, pop out. It's hard to know. It is something that's on the books that they should have a license, but we're not chasing them down the street, I don't believe.
It sounds like the state's running a pot operation and they've got private contractors doing the work for them to make money.
And they're proposing lowering the taxes to get more, which doesn't make sense. But anyways. So any other questions? This is a public hearing. Go ahead and open the public hearing. Let anybody who wants to discuss marijuana with us come up. Nobody wants to discuss the topic, so I will close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move approval with, because we have to.
For motion one, I take it.
For number one, yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I'm going to oppose it. Doesn't make a difference, but I'm still going to do it. And anybody abstained? Motion carries for one. Do we have a motion for the second?
So moved.
Second. So we have a motion and a second, same folks. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, myself. Abstained, motion carries for one. Thank you. Next item.
Next item is regular calendar, item number 15. The subject is adopting a resolution approving an additional $2,280,000 allocation of home investment partnership program funds for a total allocation of $3,580,000 to the Sunrise Point Apartments at 7424 Sunrise Boulevard, thereby committing the city's future home partnership program allocations for approximately 10 years. And the recommendation is to approve a resolution allocating those funds.
Stephanie.
Good evening, Mayor Slowey, members of the council, Stephanie Quater, Community Development Department. As Amy mentioned, I'm here tonight to talk to you about the Sunrise Point Apartment project at 7424 Sunrise. This is a request from staff to make an additional allocation of about $2.2 million in home funds to this project in order to make it more competitive for federal tax credits. The home investment partnership program, it's a, oops, excuse me, it's a federal program that provides formula grants, kind of like CDBG, to states and local governments to create more affordable housing. In 2000, the city of Citrus Heights joined the consortium with Sacramento County and the city of Rancho Cordova in order to qualify for home funding. As the lead administrative entity, SHRA accepts and reviews any application for home eligible projects within the city of Citrus Heights boundaries. SHRA releases a request for proposals, and if any of the applications that come in are within the city of Citrus Heights, they review the eligible proposals and then they would forward them on to Citrus Heights for our city council to approve or, or say that they don't approve of the project. The project then goes to the county's Board of Supervisors for final consideration. In the past, we used home funds for the first-time home buyer program. We still operate the first-time home buyer program, but we use state funding for this program because it's a little more flexible. As a reminder, the Sunrise Point project is located on Sunrise Boulevard, just north of Oak Avenue, and it was formerly the Christmas Tree Lot. The developer is Jamboree Housing Corporation and the service provider is Hope Cooperative, which was formerly TLCS. And we have representatives from the development team here and also from SHRA. If you have any questions, they're happy to answer them. This project consists of 47 units. Forty-six of them will be income restricted to low-income households. There will be one market rate unit for an onsite manager. What's unique about this project is that it's a permanent supportive housing project, which includes the ongoing supportive services in addition to the housing costs. So it's all included with the cost of the project in order to really set up the residents for success. You've seen this project before, so a little reminder about the background. Last January, you approved the entitlements for the project and also allocated the first $1.3 million in home funds in exchange for replacement credits for the Cyonora units that were demolished. In July of last year, Jamboree applied for the 9% federal tax credits, but unfortunately, it wasn't recommended for funding. So Jamboree came back and met with city staff in October to talk about possible solutions to make the project more competitive for the next round. In order to make it more competitive, Jamboree requested an additional local match. This is really, a lot of times, what a project being successful comes down to, is the amount of local match, because generally, all of the projects meet all of the points, and so it comes down to that tiebreaker score. Because of this, SHRA offered to advance Citrus Heights an additional $2.28 million in federal home funds for Sunrise Point. Because SHRA has these home funds, they have the consortium's funds in one account, and so they're going to loan us a portion of the general consortium money from, from the pool of home funds. If we don't do this, then the city would continue to receive about $250,000 in annual funds that we would work with SHRA to determine which projects are eligible. If this is approved, the total fund allocation to this project would be $3.58 million. And the city's annual allocation would be deducted from the $2.2 million that was the advance until the balance due is zero. We estimate that this repayment will occur in about 2030, so it'll be about a 10-year commitment of the city's future home funds. So just to get a little better look about what you did and what we're requesting tonight, the $1.3 million is the amount that you allocated previously. And this was all of the city's program income and allocations that we had saved up. And then in addition, our 2019 allocation was advanced to us in this portion. So our balance is basically zero. And then this $2.28 million would be in advance for future home funds that our annual allocation would be deducted from until our balance is zero again. When staff evaluated whether or not to allocate the additional home funds to this project, we came up with the recommendation to do so for the following reasons. It's a very responsible developer. The development team has been working with the city and has been really responsive to resident needs. They've been doing this for almost 30 years and they've delivered a lot of really high-quality results. It would also help us make progress towards our arena obligations that the city has to meet. And project entitlements are already approved. The developer is ready to proceed. We're really just waiting on the financing. Additionally, it would provide a total of 23 Cyonora replacement units for $3.58 million. The city's paying $150,000 per unit at this cost compared to the actual cost of $460,000 per unit. So it's really a good deal, even though it is a lot of money. Lastly, it would reduce the density necessary to redevelop Cyonora Drive. Because it reduces our replacement units that we need to meet, then we could reduce the density required on Cyonora Drive, which was a goal of the original Cyonora strategy. And the deadline to replace the units is September 2022. So with that, do you have any questions for me or for the development team? We can answer.
Questions, I know staff has met or tried to meet with each of us on an individual basis, so I think most of us got a rundown of this before tonight's presentation. But any questions for Stephanie? Brett?
I'll go first. Just to be clear, the language in there, we hear loan repayment and stuff like that. Is money coming back to us from this group? Or is that loan repayment, in essence, us taking a credit against what we, we would get in the future, and we're calling that the loan repayment?
It's both ways. So the amount that we're giving in the home funds to the, to the developer is considered a loan, but they generally are forgivable loans if, as long as they fulfill the affordability period. The amount of money, the home funds that SHRA is advancing to us is, is a loan that they're loaning to us through the overall pool of home funds that would then be deducted from our annual allocation.
And then in the past, I mean, excuse me, previously a year ago, when we talked about this funding, we talked about money that was already sitting in the bank, money that we had, we had received already. Now we're talking about 10 years' worth of funds in the future, which would not allow us then to be able to have any of those funds to do anything else that might come along during those 10 years, correct?
That's correct. It is an opportunity cost.
And then on, the thing I, that really bothers me also is the first-time home buyer program side of it. If people use the state one that we've talked about, that you mentioned, are they able to use the federal one together at all? Or would they have to use one or the other if we, if we had the federal one still available?
No, we switched the program, so the funding is only through the state funding now.
But that switch was already made.
Right. It's in place now.
It's in place.
So we're talking about $3.5 million for 47 units, which I think pencils out to $76,000 a unit. I thought it was 76,000, but you mentioned something about 150,000?
I think the reason why the numbers are different is because we only receive half of the replacement credits, because it's outside of the redevelopment area. So even though it's 46 units, we're only replacing 20, we're only getting 23 credits. So that's what I...
That's towards the credit side then. So for each unit, though, if we use this money, we're then subsidizing those units to the tune of $76,000 each.
Yes.
And the difficult thing I found was, was getting a solid definition on low-income household and what median income meant, because there were some different definitions. But in looking at those, I found the numbers were actually pretty high. They can be anywhere between about 70,000 and 80,000, depending on what definition you're looking at for median income. And then you come back and it's 80% of, then it's 50% of that, or 30% of that. And it was difficult to really crunch the number down, but it seemed like at some point somebody could be making approximately $50,000 or so, and their rent could be about $1,000 a month. Am I way off? Can you even address that side of it?
Do we want to have somebody from, one of you come up to...
Jerry will come up. Jerry will come up from Jamboree.
Thank you. And I'll go ahead and open comments to the public.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. One thing to keep in mind is there's a distinction between the income targeting that is projected for financing purposes and who is actually going to be residing in this project. In addition to the resources that are being allocated tonight, the project has secured 46 project-based vouchers from the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, which are coming from the, the county housing authority. And those vouchers have a designation that only homeless individuals will reside in the units. So although there's a distinction between the restrictions that will be placed through the regulatory agreement on the property, because... the units. So although there's a distinction between the restrictions that will be placed through the regulatory agreement on the property, because there will be an overlay of forty-six project-based vouchers, the individuals that reside in this complex will likely have no income, and if they do have income, it would be SSI, which is very nominal.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I'm not, let me be clear, I'm not speaking against the project. We supported it last year. My concern is that it takes away our ability to do anything in the future if something else comes along that we find attractive for the next ten years. And I think it's, it was, the ability to have, take a bite at the apple was there last year, and now it looks like the whole apple wants to be eaten, and that's my concern is that five years from now, something wonderful might come along, and we think, well, we could have put two and a half million into that, and now it's not available. I think it's just too big of a bite of the apple. I wish there was some compromise maybe that could be worked out money-wise, but I understand that's what they're looking for for now.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Like I said, I know most of us would have an opportunity to pull up with staff on it. You know, from my opinion, yeah, it is a lot of money, but you know, I'm looking at three things. One, it's much needed. Two, we need to replace units from what we did on Sayonara, and I'm quite happy not to necessarily put them back on Sayonara. And two, I have personally visited sites, not only built by Jamboree, but, and I forgot the new name of TLCS. Hope, yeah, okay, that makes sense. Very well managed. I mean, quite frankly, better managed than some of the places I've lived in in my past. So I actually think it's a good program for the city. Quite frankly, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year doesn't allow us to do much on an annual basis. And yes, it commits it for ten years, but in the long run, I think there was, I think it's a great compromise. We need low-income housing. It will get folks off the street. It has managed, it has onsite management, which is important to me, and I don't, you know, I think it's a good, I'm willing to support it. So with that, what's the pleasure of the council?
I move approval of the, do we have to, this isn't a public hearing, no. I move approval of staff's recommendation.
It's not, it's not a public hearing. Yeah, but that's a different one. I can read.
Okay.
Fifteen, that's sixteen. I got it. It's keeping me on my toes. We got a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes, we have.
Okay, sorry. We got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed. Abstained. Motion carries four one. Next item.
Next item is number sixteen. The subject is Approval of Economic Development Support Fund for the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce. The recommendation is to approve a resolution approving a ten thousand dollar sponsorship to the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce from the Economic Development Support Fund.
Good evening, Mayor Slowey and members of City Council. Megan Huber, Economic Development and Communications Manager for the City of Citrus Heights. I bring to you this evening a fund request regarding our Economic Development Support Fund from our Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce. As council recalls, our ED Support Fund exists to assist with economic development-related activities, and it is an annually replenished fund. The chamber request, which you have before you this evening noted as application, is that we participate as a diamond-level sponsorship in the amount of ten thousand dollars. We do have a long history of being this level of sponsor, at least for the past six years, and the request certainly meets multiple criteria as it is laid out in the support fund. I'd also like to summarize it from a more holistic viewpoint in terms of what the Chamber of Commerce does for economic development here in Citrus Heights. The first is they directly support our strategic goal of diversifying the local economy. The second, they really do support business retention and expansion. We have about over three thousand businesses here in the city of Citrus Heights and a small but mighty economic development department. So the more eyes and ears open on the ground to create a support system for our businesses as well as operate as an early warning system, the more folks can network and share with each other, the more we can stay plugged in to our businesses as well, and the chamber does that for us. And finally, we certainly have aligned marketing and promotion goals with the Chamber of Commerce. It's both of our shared goal to really voice and amplify the value proposition of having a business here within the city of Citrus Heights. So with that, I would like to open it up for questions, and Mayor Slowey, I know we also have a comment card.
Any comments or questions from us before we get to our speaker? All right, Eileen Myerson, you have five minutes. You don't have to take it all if you don't want, but you know, feel free.
Well, good evening, Mayor Slowey and council members. It's good to see each of you tonight. You are a little feisty tonight. I like it. And I wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you for your, every consideration, and just let you know that the chamber is celebrating its sixty-second year this year since it's been chartered, and we're proud and excited about the future that the chamber holds here in our city, not only for our members, but in collaboration and partnering with the city. So we're striving to promote the interests of the businesses and the business community here. And in 2020, the chamber is working to influence government and our elected officials through the Government Issues Committee and the Political Action Committee. One of my personal focus that I want to work on this year is getting to know more of the members strategically. I've worked on that last year in 2019. That's another continued goal of mine, and finding out what they think and how they feel about the chamber. And one of the things I've concluded this year is that members do matter most to the chamber, and they're the heart of the chamber. So I look forward to the future. I look forward to working with the city. I look forward to seeing all of you at community events, at the, at city events, and at chamber events, and having opportunities to talk to each of you about what you see the chamber's position and how we should be involved with the city on the local level. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. What's the pleasure of the council?
I'll move the item.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, abstained. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Next item is Department Report Seventeen regarding Economic Development and Communications Division update.
Welcome, ladies.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Haley Reed, Management Analyst with our Economic Development.
And Nicole Baxter, Communications Officer.
Tonight, we're here to provide a brief project update from our Economic Development and Communications Division. I would like to begin with providing a 2018 business review of our community. Our Business License Division has been busy issuing a total of four hundred and sixty-eight new business licenses and a total of one thousand two hundred and twenty-four renewals last year. Of our total business licenses, we have seven hundred and ninety-five operating-as-home-based businesses. Over a year ago, we began to streamline our renewal process by making those services available online in an effort to make business easier for our owners. Our business license applications provide a wealth of first-person information, which we use to analyze the Citrus Heights business community. The number of licenses provided by the city annually opens the doors to really show our support for our new and renewing businesses, ultimately providing us with an opportunity to lay the foundation for a successful business retention program. One of the exciting things that we've been working on in our Economic Development Division is creating a strong and positive city and business relationship. A major part of successful business attraction and retention is forging strong relationships with our business owners and community members. In an effort to streamline the process for starting a new business and thus providing a positive interaction, we have created a new business welcome kit. These kits are provided to new business license applicants and are filled with resources and information to assist them in their business endeavor. Each Economic Development folder contains a welcome letter to the community, information on SMUD, sewer district incentive programs, and how to join the Chamber of Commerce, as well as PD brochures on business robbery prevention and crime prevention through environmental design. We have also included information on how to get involved in the community through the Citrus Heights collaborative meetings and business association opportunities. One of my favorite bits of information included in our business spotlight is our Business Spotlight questionnaire. We have compiled a series of questions for our business owners to complete, which are utilized by the city's social media channels, monthly e-newsletters, and also the city's webpage, where we plan to feature our solid roots, new growth testimonials, highlighting our community and continued growth. Our social media and communication campaigns seamlessly blend the world of economic development and communications while positively highlighting our Citrus Heights business community. So in line with our current economic development strategic goals, we have scheduled a series of Business Association Appreciation Open Houses and social media campaigns to continue engagement with our community members and business owners. On Friday, January seventeenth, Councilmember Bruins, along with city and PD staff, had the pleasure of visiting TIT, located on Auburn Boulevard, for the first Business Appreciation Open House. More than twenty community members and business owners were able to join us. And our next Business Association Open House will be on February twelfth from nine AM to eleven AM, and this time, we'll be focusing on Antelope Crossing, and we'll be at Sammy's Restaurant, so look for an invitation. These communication plans are an important part of our economic development strategy, and I'd like to hand this update over to Nicole Baxter, our Communications Officer.
Thanks, Haley. TIT's getting a lot of love tonight. I'm excited to talk about our communication strategy. As Haley mentioned, we decided to kind of tack on a social media strategy to the Business Appreciation strategic goal, so that's happening right now, and I'm thrilled to share the results. We're four days in. One of our posts, which was actually a before-and-after picture of TIT after the Activate Auburn Grant Program, kind of went mini-viral, and so we've already seen seven thousand three hundred impressions, three hundred and eighty-four reactions, so that's clicking love, hopefully, and eight hundred and eighty-nine clicks. And that's an exciting number for me, because that's interest in our local businesses that are along this corridor, so they're clicking to find out more about the business or view more photos, so that really shows a high level of engagement. So we're considering this a success so far. Shameless plug, please follow us on Facebook. So I wanted to take a step back and talk about what goes into a communications plan. So our first communications plan was actually our Best Lights in Citrus Heights competition. Hopefully, you all heard about it. It was a holiday lights competition, and we kind of, I'll use this as an example to talk about a communications plan. So first thing we do is we kind of create a one sheet, and we lay out the goals of the campaign. We talk about the implementation, the strategy behind that, measuring success, and how long we're going to run a campaign. So for the Best Lights in Citrus Heights, we had three goals. We wanted to build our social media presence. We wanted to continue to foster a sense of community, and we also wanted to engage our City Hall employees here. On the implementation side, we wanted to engage our social audience, also plug this in our internal newsletter, and, excuse me, in our newsletter, and again, emails to our internal audience and employees, and we set several measures for success. So we were very successful on this campaign. We wanted to hit a ten percent growth on our Facebook page, which we hit. We wanted to see a high level of engagement on those posts, so just like the TIT picture with those high clicks, shares, comments, likes, that's kind of how we gauge engagement. Just a little background information, industry standard is an engagement rate of one percent. Here at Citrus Heights City Hall, our benchmark is ten percent, already higher than the industry standard, and this campaign saw eleven to thirty-four percent engagement. So that just shows us the community was engaged, and they liked what they saw. To that end, I did want to play a voice message that was left here at City Hall to kind of show you the community feedback that we got.
Hi, this is John Barth. I would like to thank all of you at the City of Citrus Heights, the staff, for voting my family and myself our lights as your first best light of Citrus Heights. I appreciate all the city has done for me with the markers for no parking, especially Regina's helped me out a lot, and I appreciate all that you guys have done. Thank you very much, and have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
So that's just a little sneak peek of the fun community engagement that I got to receive. And then the third goal there was engage our employees. So I put a picture here of the candy grams our department created. So these were available in City Hall, our break room. We encouraged employees to take them and pass them out to homes with great holiday lights. And on the card, it said, "You've been nominated by a City Hall employee for the Best Lights in Citrus Heights campaign," and we got great feedback on that, too. I was excited to see our employees here really get involved and reach out to the community, and we had great feedback there, too. So I wanted to end on a little video that we kind of shared as a wrap-up to this campaign on social media, and it's going to feature our four winners. Black box.
I did.
Well, I'll send that around to you guys, so you can see it. Dig my word, it was amazing. But so, the video showcased our four winners. We're hoping to keep this competition going year after year, because we consider it a huge success and a really exciting first communications campaign. So thank you for hearing our department update.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Nothing we can do about technical difficulties, but yeah, if you would email us, that would be great.
It worked in rehearsal.
All right, next item. Next man.
Next item is Department Report Eighteen regarding Rental Housing Inspection Program Update.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council members. I am Senior Code Enforcement Officer Deborah Nathwith, Citrus Heights Police Department. I'm here on behalf of Police Chief Ron Lawrence to provide an update on the strategic plan related to the rental housing inspection program. So our mission for this program is to proactively identify blighted and deteriorated housing stock and to ensure the rehabilitation or elimination of housing that does not meet minimum building code and housing code standards, or is not safe to occupy and further to preserve and enhance the quality of life for residents of the city living in the residential rental housing. Right now, I would like to introduce the team for the rental housing inspection program, so if you guys could stand up, please. First, we have Sergeant James Evans of Special Operations. Is Lieutenant, oh, so in the back, we have Lieutenant Chad Morris, Officer Roxanne Reinick, Officer Casey O'Connor, Officer Grillo, Dominic Grillo, and our program assistant, Amy Rolfe. This is our new team for the rental housing inspection, and I really want to say how proud I am to be working with them, because we've done amazing things in the last six months, which I'm going to share with you.
Great.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
So this is a did you know, the city has fifteen thousand four hundred and forty-five rental units that represent over forty percent of all housing units in Citrus Heights. It is of paramount importance that the city ensures its rental housing stock remains a desirable, safe, clean, and healthy option for residents. So the property, the rental breakdown I did based on single-family units, duplexes, and apartment complexes. So single-family units is four thousand seven hundred and forty-three. Two-to-four plexes are two thousand eighty. Apartment units are eight thousand six hundred and twenty-two, so there's a total of seventy-six apartment complexes in the city. So our violation overview, just to give you a snapshot of the first six months of the program and what we've achieved thus far, is the total housing units with violations are three thousand one hundred and seventy-five. So the difference between the total and the housing units is that some units would have more than one violation, so the total amount of code violations that we have verified more than one violation, so the total amount of code violations that we have verified in our first six months of the program is 4,435. So the common violations that put the community at risk are the things that we mainly check out along with the checklist that we have when we go out to our inspections, and the top six are the lack of GFCI protectors for the kitchens and the bathrooms, missing or non-operable smoke alarms, faulty water heater installations, lack of weather protection for roofs, faulty plumbing, and hazardous wiring. So the benefits that we have with the partnership with our rental inspection program, which was kind of something that surprised me along the way with when we were going through our inspections, and that was, a couple of items were identifying and correcting hazardous and potentially deadly violations, and that would be, for example, a GFCI protector where what was happening is we were just wanting to educate our property managers that were managing large apartment complexes that were built, you know, in the 70s and 80s. So at this point, you know, when they're managing the properties, they're not aware of the new building code requirements. So this is kind of a benefit for our partnership with the property managers and getting those items updated. Another one is building relationships with the tenants, community members, property managers, and property owners. So this is kind of twofold. The first one is the tenants, and that is, we wanted to be advocates for these tenants because what we were finding is that tenants were reaching out to us when they wanted their units to be inspected, and they, out of fear, didn't want to make a complaint to the property owner or management team in fear of being evicted. So this was a great opportunity for our team to step in and be their advocates so that we can interact with the property managers and property owners to ensure that they were living in safe conditions. And the second piece of this with property managers, that is that we have a good relationship with educating them on, it's not so much that we want to enforce all these codes to force them to do things they're not supposed to, you know, that are not outside the code, it's to provide a safe environment for their tenants. And the property managers, we've gotten some really good feedback with the property managers in building this great relationship, and one of those examples was at the end of the year, the police department sends out flyers to push out information on social media into the community as reminders of, for example, during the holiday season, locking your valuables up, not having them out in plain sight. So what I had our program assistant do is put this flyer and blast it to our property managers and have them put it in the tenants' mailboxes. So I got a lot of really good, positive feedback from that, and they really appreciated us keeping them updated, and that partnership, I feel, has been really beneficial to the success of this program. So I wanted to talk about a couple of early wins that we've come across in our short time of being a program, and this particular unit, the tenant had lived there over 25 years, and so they just stopped inspecting her unit about 10 years ago because it was challenging. So when we started doing these inspections and we came across some of the units that obviously needed to be addressed, we will work with tenants, property managers, we just want to make sure that everyone is living in safe, healthy environments. So these are some of the before and afters. You know, you have a bathroom shower, where it's the before, where they come in and replace it, sink, and they did a complete remodel. We have Officer Grillo, who's very passionate about his job. So these are some of the early wins within six months that we're seeing, so it's been really exciting for our team. Another win that was really good for us is, we had a 4plex that was infested with bedbugs and cockroaches, and so we reached out to the property owner, and this is another example, when we went to the duplex or 4plex, when we were speaking to the tenants, a couple of them were almost refusing to want to make the complaint, and I let them know, "I will be your advocate, I'll be the one that addresses this, you don't have to get involved." And one of the tenant's units was so infested with bedbugs, he was, he bolted a hammock to the ceiling to avoid being bitten during the night and while he was living there, and he was the one that did not want to make the complaint. So, it's tenants like this that I feel was a really big win and made us feel really good about, you know, providing the service for the city. So we had the property owner tent it, now there's no issues, it's been cleaned up, tenants are really happy, and things are running along smoothly, so that was great. Some of the challenges and the violations, I wanted to show you photos of that we come across, which could be really dangerous and deadly, are water heaters. In the first picture, obviously, the piping is kind of makeshift, it's really dangerous, it's not secure, then you have, you know, another issue with rodents. You have piping, exposed wires, seismic strapping to the right where it's not secure, and some of these water heaters, if they're not properly insulated or installed, we could have, they could explode, they could fall off, there could be some dangers that are attached to that. Another problem that we come across is electrical hazards, and so these are actual outlets that we take photos of on our inspections. So, you know, our fear is a child coming up and putting their fingers in there, animals, anyone touching these live wires could potentially be harmful to them. Another one, not just inspecting the interior of our units, is the exterior because we want to beautify the city, and so we have to make sure we're doing from inside and out. So these are some of the items that we're coming across on our inspections that we're in the process of cleaning up with the property owners. So this is a before and after on the left, this is within three weeks that we worked with the property owner, and at first we thought possibly moving out, but not the case, just like to use the storage on the driveway. Thank you. Another item is just storage on the driveway. Sometimes, I think with people, it could be just a, hey, nice little friendly reminder, let's maintain the front of our properties because everyone on the street does, then obviously your values of your home will continue to go up, you'll get better quality tenants moving into your rentals. So that is the end of my presentation. Do you have any questions for me?
I don't have any questions, comments. I mean, it's a great program, we did it, quality of life initially. It sounds like there's, you know, there's health and safety benefits that are coming out of it, so that's great. Welcome to our new employees. Well, you know, you're not technically new, you've been around for a bit, but, you know, we've been reactive in this space until this, and now we're trying to be proactive, and it appears to be working, so thank you. Other comments or questions?
Just wanted to commend you for how much you've accomplished in such a short period of time. Well done.
Yep, thank you. You're not always looked at with a friendly face when you show up, but good to see the relationships building because that's what it's about, you know, we want...
You know, and one other sign of a successful program is, we're not getting, the council is not getting, at least I haven't gotten, a lot of complaints or negative feedback at all, and so that just lets me know that you're doing your job professionally, as well as getting it done, you're doing a good professional job.
Thank you for that feedback.
I've got one, and...
Well, one, okay.
You know, and I'm just saying, quite frankly, I expected to get a lot, so, and it got resolved, so it's good.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you again, for all of you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
All right. What's next, Amy?
Next item is City Manager Items, and there are none. Next item is Items Requested by Council Members or Future Agenda Items.
We'll call it a night.